This meeting come to order, today is Tuesday, August 29, 2017. Today is voting day in Prescott and hope everybody's had an opportunity to vote. If you haven't, you can do so until seven o'clock tonight. This is a study session of the Prescott City Council. We have two items today and I'll take public comment on both of them. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ober.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lizelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Siskah.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All here.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody coming out today and having an opportunity to listen to what we're doing here. We'll start with item 3A.
Request by U.S. Vets for allocation of city water to support a proposed redevelopment project at 1040 Whipple Street.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Leslie Grazer, City Water Resources Manager. I'm here to introduce the group today that will be presenting and give you just a quick item summary first. So this is Water Service Agreement Application 17009. It was submitted in April of 2017. It's for an alternative water allocation for a 60-unit low-income apartment complex for use by the U.S. Vets. It's had a Department of Housing grant at one time and later in May of 2017, the council adopted a resolution endorsing the project. However, the grant funding was not received. The U.S. Vets subsequently submitted a revised project to be financed by other sources and it was now going to consist of 88 studio units, an apartment manager's apartment unit, 14-unit shelter, and a 56-bed dormitory. It will have a commercial kitchen and dining hall and this will, of course, be a, it's a bigger project than it was before. It's a complex now. So at the study session, or excuse me, at the meeting of the Council Water Issues Committee on August 1st, the gentleman referred this to a study session so you could see the project in its entirety and hear from the applicants about this project a little bit more. So today, representing City Gate is a team. Some are from U.S. Vets, some are with the development side, with the real estate side. Present you the full picture on this project. So I'd like to introduce or invite them up and let them introduce themselves.
Good afternoon. My name is Raymond Zogob with Bloom Tree Realty. I represent the real estate component of this project.
Good afternoon. Carol Benedict with U.S. Vets.
And I'm Dane Beck. I'm representing the development side of the project. So we'd like to start out with just introducing the property. For all those who are maybe not familiar with the project, it consists of about 36,000 square feet under roof, just over two and a half acres. It situates at 1040 Whipple Street, just to the west of Miller Valley School, former school. The project has been in existence since the early 1990s and it has, was originally built for an apartment complex, but it never got to an apartment complex. It went to an office complex. And a little bit before my time here in Prescott, but what, from what I understand is because of the proximity to services and especially the hospital, which is just a stone's throws away to the north, it became a medical complex primarily. So a lot of doctors early were in this complex. As the community grew and projects moved to the north in the crossings, if you're familiar with the project, to the north of Prescott on Willow Creek Road, this project had to transform into alternative office uses, which it has been for the last 10 years. Been working with the owners of this property for now about five years, keeping it leased, which has been a challenge, the office environment here in Prescott. It's been fully leased, but now is in another transition phase. So timing-wise, we've conceived of this idea of repurposing the project for a community benefit to incorporate the U.S. Vets and their needs and to incorporate a combination of housing and office complex for the U.S. Vets complex. Seems to be ideally situated for their needs because of the community services and the immediate proximity of this project. Any questions on the real estate? I'm going to turn it over.
Dr. Blair.
My question will be for Leslie when the presentation's over.
Okay. Thank you. That's a better look of it without the aerial version so you can see the two buildings side by side that are two-story and the one building off to the west, which is a 5,000-square-foot building. And I'll have Dane describe more of what is happening in those two buildings as he gets to his presentation.
Good afternoon again. So for those of you who aren't familiar or just need a little reminder of U.S. Vets, our mission is the transition of military veterans and their families through the provision of housing, case management, counseling, and wraparound supports. So we've been in Prescott since 2003. We're coming up on our 15-year anniversary here in January, so that's very exciting for us. Where we are currently located is up on Gurley Street where we have no capacity to grow. And so if you look at the community need, last year, the pick count, 34% of the homeless population were veterans. So that is nearly four times the national average, which is 9% right now. So it went down some this year, so we're making good progress, but the need is still high. So of the, this year's pick count, there were nearly 300 sheltered individuals. Of those individuals, 65% of them were veterans with nowhere to transition into permanent housing. So that's why one of the major needs for this project is to have the permanent housing units, to be able to transition them into so that we can shelter the other veterans that are still unsheltered. So last year, we served 182 veterans. 68% of them were transitioned into permanent housing. We'd like that to be 100%. How do we do it? We do it, we have permanent supportive housing throughout the community. So we have rentals that we hold the lease and then sublet to our veterans. Some are project-based, some are individual units. We have our transitional housing units, which is 56 beds. That's funded by the VA and Arizona Department of Housing. We provide transportation. We have onsite, mental health services, a variety of support, substance abuse treatment, life skills group. We have our culinary skills trade program. We do housing counseling, housing assistance, and then we also have emergency shelter grant through the Department of Economic Security where we can do some rapid rehousing if somebody doesn't need the transition, but they can, need help just getting right into a facility or an apartment unit that they could right away. We do street outreach and we also run the coordinated entry system here in Prescott, which started May 2nd, and over 200 individuals almost have gone through coordinated entry. So we recognize the need for homelessness at large in the community. So that's why the coordinated entry system, which is housed at CCJ right now, they're housing it for us and helping us staff it as well. In addition to that, we're working with partnerships with CCJ and some other nonprofits to do joint funding so that we can find subsidies for non-veteran people who are homeless or experiencing homelessness and move them into this project as well. We're currently funded by numerous funders. We've had the VA funding for 15 years, Arizona Department of Housing for 15 years, Arizona Department of Veteran Services, six years, Department of Labor for five years, the Community Foundation, four years, APS, four years, Economic Security, now two years, and then the Attorney General, we've had just one year and we'll have that for a couple of years still to go. So we have some really solid funding that is behind us on this project as well. Any questions?
Councilman Orr.
Mayor Protem. Thank you. I think you may have qualified that this is not necessarily limited to veterans.
Correct.
So...
Well, we're hoping it won't be. We have to find the funding for the non-veteran side.
Okay, but, okay, so you have the funding for the veterans, but you don't have the funding for the non-veterans.
Correct. We just actually submitted an application to HUD last week in partnership with CCJ for non-veterans for 15 units. So, and then there'll be a couple more that are coming out, grant applications coming out in September that we will apply for and hope to partner with as well.
And by cause and effect, if you don't get that funding, then what?
We'll continue to seek funding for it. We will have the funding for the veteran side of it, but we will still continue to seek. If not, then we still have the affordable units that we can help house people in who can afford to live there.
Thank you.
So there'll be, you know, at fair market rents.
Yeah. I appreciate that. My concern at this particular point in time is, of course, always been with homeless, always has been with those that can't help themselves. So veterans is a big concern, understanding that a lot of the veterans also have some mental issues.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So I just want to make sure what we're working on here.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. That's why we secured the funding from the Arizona Department of the Office of the Attorney General to have our own mental health staff on staff. So we have licensed professional counselors on staff because there is a long wait at the VA for mental health services sometimes. So our veterans that we serve don't have to wait. They get mental health treatment immediately.
Thank you. I think it's important as we try and extrapolate out in public what we're actually trying to accomplish here because I don't want to read someplace in local newspaper or a local radio station or something where we're going out there bringing a bunch of mentally ill people on the streets of Prescott. So that's sort of where we're trying to go here. We're trying to do something that's good.
It is, yeah. And it's important to note that we have staff 24/7/365. There's always staff onsite as there will be with this project 100% of the time, so.
100%. Thank you very much.
100%.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Hi, Carol.
Hi.
Prescott, I think, is blessed with having one of the two VA hospitals in the state. And that also makes it our community's responsibility to care for the veterans that come here for care at the VA. And I know that Prescott has a higher proportion of homeless veterans than most communities in Arizona. So I think this project is very much needed.
Thank you.
And my question is whether or not this particular project will accommodate female veterans.
Absolutely. We serve about 5% of our clients are female. We don't have a limit. We could serve more. That's just what the need is for right now. I think currently in our transitional housing project, we have six female veterans.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, Mayor. So Carol, it's good to see you.
Yes.
So will the veterans have priority?
Yes, they will. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll give a brief description of how this project came to be. The project team has been a collaboration between my group, Raymond's team, and the U.S. Vets to create a campus complex serving the needs of transitional veterans and Prescott residents seeking affordable housing. I can get, I'll get in, I'll dive into that further when we get to the other slides. The development team, we have a very proven track record of getting projects off the ground in northern Arizona. Happy to submit resumes on any of that. Also, I know there was some concern with going forward. When the grant funding project wasn't going to work for multiple reasons, the way the campus was laid out, parcels, different things, we take it, we looked at this pretty hard and realized that this was a need and was a viable business as well. I've approached many of the lenders that I work with routinely, have multiple letters of interest on the project. So as far as the project going forward, I'm very comfortable with that. Back to the project history a little bit. The, it was started out as grant that quickly became not feasible. The grant application was, timeline was very tight and we didn't, there were some issues with parcels and how to make the project fit into the specific grant mold, which was tough. We also were able to work with U.S. Vets and really understand their full scope of need. That included then bringing in the Veterans in Progress program that can be dedicated to one of the floors of the buildings and then the, how the, we could lay out the support services for their Veterans in Progress team and really fill up this campus and utilize all the buildings. And they will, Carol told you, but they'll house, feed, and provide educational services. This is a slide, this is our concept for the studio apartments in the, I might, real quick, just jump back to the, here's the site plan. So the two buildings right there in the middle are two-story buildings. Those would provide, those would become residential. The building to the left, more than likely, would be support services, commercial kitchen, offices, et cetera. And then the, there's a, right, right around the middle is a manager's apartment, which would stay a manager's apartment. And then you, down low, you have the old frontage on Whipple, which is currently houses a couple businesses. That would be utilized for support as well. So that gives you kind of the lay, lay of the project. So this is the layout. These would be the 88-studio apartments. You'd walk in, there's a living room, there's a sleeping area, there's a bathroom, and there's a small efficiency kitchen. These are very efficient units designed to meet the Federal Housing Authority guidelines and the Federal Housing Authority reimbursement schedules. This is a blow-up of that unit. Again, as you can see, small efficiency unit, but, you know, meant to provide workforce slash, you know, affordable housing to our community. This is a blow-up of the Veterans in Progress building. This would be, this is where they will house the 56 individuals in a quote-unquote dormitory-style housing. This is a blow-up of that. As you, as you would enter it, you'd have a sleeping area on each side. You'd have a bathroom centrally with a shower and a water closet. And then you'd have two sleeping areas on the other side. There would be 14 of these units. 14 times 4 gives us 56, 56 beds. So that's basically project ready. Do you have any final?
Just on this, on this particular plan, this is the piece that was missing in the first round when we submitted the application and got the resolution. This piece has been added as part of that full campus approach. The other benefit to this plan is that, in the past, Carol can speak to this, the current situation is that many of the veterans live four or five to a room. This is giving them more privacy, only two sleeping, two beds and a sleeping quarter. And that is a big plus. I think Karen can speak, Carol can speak to that.
Yeah. The benefit right now, because we have to utilize bunk beds because our space is so limited and so it limits the amount of disabled veterans that we can help because oftentimes we don't have enough lower bunks available. So these will all be single bunks, which would allow us to, about 65% of our veterans coming in on a fixed income or eligible for fixed income due to a disability of some kind and they're over the age of 55. So this will be a huge benefit. We'll be able to serve more of our disabled veterans with this model than we currently can, so.
Any questions, comments from the council?
I have one more.
Anyone from the public?
I have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
It's probably for Dane. Your site plan shows buildings and parking spaces. I'm wondering if there are planned outdoor community spaces where people can sit and relax and socialize with each other and landscaping, things that make it a more livable environment.
I'm sure Building Department will require those as we get further into it. As we've been meeting challenges as they pop up, the, the, there will definitely be a community center part. The vets in their traditional, have educational areas, meeting areas. Probably some indoor/outdoor space would accompany that. As far as landscaping, I have no doubt that Planning and Development will weigh in heavily on that as we progress through the plan. I don't have any recommendations at this time. I usually wait to get their, the requirements and then we fit it into the project.
I know we can't require it, but I would strongly encourage you to think about installing rainwater harvesting for the landscaping and then using that as a learning opportunity for vets because I see a big future business growing here in installing and maintaining rain harvesting systems.
We have plenty of rain at this location. Comes off those roofs fast.
Yes, you have a lot of rooftops, yeah.
We do. The, and they, just so we're all clear, the veterans would have about a quarter of this project and the rest would be, you know, would be Fair Housing Authority guidelines. So it would be, go back and forth and the veterans could, you know, the use could be scaled up or down. But the, the economy of scale to fit the site made it so that you would have some inside the nonprofit and some outside. But at that Fair Housing guideline level, that's where it's been designed to.
Appreciate that clarification.
No problem.
Mayor, if I could?
Yeah, go ahead.
I guess I misunderstood. I thought the other end was, the quarter was for general reuse and it was the majority for vets' use for the site. Did I misunderstand that?
Well, the way it's currently, when we've been trading LOIs back and forth, the 56 dormitory style, that's 100% veteran. And then the veterans would take up to a quarter of the other ones at this point.
Okay.
So if you blend that, I guess I get in my head, I got to keep the two segments straight. You have the dormitory style is 56 beds and then you have 88 beds in the studios and they would take a quarter of that. So on a percentage basis, you're getting 56 plus 25 is 81 to 60.
Right.
Right.
Okay. I was just, I needed to get that in my head. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, and just to clarify to you, the front building there will be our outreach and workforce development, which will be open to all veterans who aren't housed with us. It will still be open to all homeless veterans and we'll serve our outreach in the front building there. So we'll have that 100% as well. And then as funding allows, Dane will let us assume more of those as we continue to hopefully secure more funding for the units then we'll be able to take on more of that project.
Councilman Siskah.
Thanks, Mayor. My question is for Leslie and so I know Steve Blair had a question for Leslie, so I'll defer to him from that standpoint. Well, first of all, history lesson, as Elizabeth Ruffner would say. My bedroom was right there at 810 Whipple Street in the front building, so it's got some meaning to me. Leslie, this project has had water in the past and being on the Water Issues Committee, can you explain to the public how much water was originally allotted to the structures and how much water is demanded for the new use?
Yes, sir. So the portfolio is broken down by groundwater supplies or alternative supplies. So on the groundwater side is what houses the current and committed demands of the city as of 1998. This could be subdivisions, this could be commercial properties, those kind of things. So this property, what we could gather from our billing records was carrying about two acre-feet of water on the groundwater side. To make the overall project go, it needed 14.35 acre-feet. So 12.35 then came from the alternative side of the portfolio.
So when the medical buildings were there, they only demanded two acre-feet of water for the whole structure?
Well, the state doesn't break it down in very fine detail. We look at what the project or that site was using in 1999 and 2005 and in 2009. And then we can kind of get an average of what that was. But it's not as detailed, the current and committed demand as say a subdivision on that, that kind of project. We know exactly how many lots. We know exactly what the state allocated for them.
That's a great use, but from our standpoint in the Water Issues Committee, bringing it forward to the whole council with the limited amount of water we have, what is the timeline that we are going to allow them to develop this? Are they going to have a year? They going to have a two-year? How are you going to set that out?
We're going to follow the current policy. If the council so chooses today to have this go to a voting session as a contract, then it'll have the performance criteria that are used. So they'll have a year to get to a building permit standpoint. Although this is a little bit different, they're not building, they're remodeling the inside. So we'll have to make some adjustments there because as, we don't have policy detail down to if you remodel, then you have this amount of time. So with most projects, we sit down and we work with them and we determine what are reasonable performance criteria.
I just wanted to be clear because in the past, we haven't been so clear. And I think it's important that the client knows they have one year to start to perform, which is a building permit. And at some point, if somebody comes back and asks for an extension, how is that granted and how many can be granted? We all don't have a crystal ball. We don't know how things go in the development world. I totally understand it, but we, as the Water Committee, don't want to tie up water on a project that may never come to fruition. So that performance criteria is key to me.
Yes. So I guess maybe to explain a little bit more, so generally, there's a year to get to a building permit, three years to get to a certificate of occupancy. And then regarding having an extension, we know that some projects just take a little more time and you'll see on your agenda for this afternoon. We have two projects that were in that situation. So policy reads you get a one-time, one-year extension. So that would apply if, as long as that policy is in place as it is now and they move towards contract. If they move towards contract at a different time, then we would be using the policy in effect at that time. But generally, these performance criteria seem to be working to keep the portfolio moving. If you can't use it, well, let's bring it back in, let somebody else use it. Come back, we'll issue out supplies again.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome, Steve. Mayor, I'd just like a question for. Leslie, I see that seven acre-feet are coming back into the alternative portfolio. Is that included in the 25.56 acre-feet that you have, what we have left in?
That was brought back in because it didn't meet the, the grant didn't happen. So we rolled it back into the general pool for this year that's available. And this project still meets that. It doesn't take more than 50% at this time.
Okay. But my question was, is that included in the 25.56 that we have here?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
It's back in, yeah.
Councilwoman Orr.
Thank you. So Dane, if you don't mind, excuse me, allergies. So what is your timeline that you're looking at until occupancy? What's your projection?
Well, we need to move fairly quickly.
Okay.
We have leases that we need to either terminate or move forward with. So our, you know, from a development side, we need to move quickly because we need to let people know what's going to happen with this project. We have the project under control at this point, but we are going to have to start spending real money real fast. So that, that's going to drive my timeline.
So quick. A quick timeline, you're saying?
I'm saying quick, yeah.
All right.
I get optimistic and, but if this project's going to go, it needs to go. We need to get into building permits. We're working through some other, we've been finding new, new issue, new challenges and opportunities at every location, but we've uncovered most of them, we think, at this point. And we could get this wrapped up and ready for submission to Building Department late this quarter or really early first quarter of 18.
One other issue is that U.S. Vets is currently in a facility that's not meeting their needs and they have to make a decision. So that's also pushing the timeframe forward. Is that correct, Carol?
Yep.
So...
And that was my second question as far as, Carol, what then happens to the Gurley Street? Is that going to work with this or is this instead of that?
It would be instead of that. But there's no space to grow at Gurley Street. We're at capacity. So we couldn't add permanent housing of any kind there or any additional transitional beds or any, we don't have onsite services at Gurley because there's no space. So right now, we have to go down a couple blocks for the veterans to get services. And so that was originally intended to be an assisted living facility, the owner of the current property. And I would imagine that that's what it would go back to, but I don't know that for a fact, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Here again, looking at the community sector that we're hoping to serve with a project like this in Prescott. You know, for those that don't have it in front of them, you know, we're talking about veterans. We're talking about chronic homeless. We're talking about elderly homeless. And we're talking about people who've been diagnosed with sickness. So I think this is a really good project that has been long overdue in the city of Prescott. And I do have a question with regards to the criteria for onsite oversight at all times, 24/7/365. There will be somebody present in the project, am I correct?
That is correct. We're mandated by our funders to actually provide 24/7/365 staffing. So we have, absolutely. We offer that currently at Gurley Street and we'll continue that at the new location.
And I appreciate that. And then when Gurley Street no longer exists, you have no idea whatsoever what would happen with that other than at one time, it was intended to be assisted living.
Right. I don't know what the landlord would, would purpose that out as then.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilman Blair.
Thank you, Mayor. Dane, I guess a question for you or for staff. You know, we just approved a 72-unit affordable housing complex by McDonald's. Do you have any part of that?
I sold them the land.
Okay. That was your land then?
Yeah.
Okay. So I, the reason why I'm asking, I didn't know whether these two projects were tied together because I knew there was an intertwining of something going on. So do we know where that? do we know where that, that project's at right now, Leslie?
I don't think there's any relationship between these two projects.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments with the council? Last call to the public. Thank you, and I think this is a very important project and hope to see it come forward for a vote.
Mayor, can I confirm that so it can be placed on a future voting session by this group? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good chat. Okay, we'll move on to 3B.
Presentation by Public Works of Delivery Methods for Downtown Capital Improvement Projects.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Henry Hesch, Public Works. As you know, we have much need for projects throughout the city, including downtown. We are here to speak to you today about some of the approaches we have taken in the past, and we are constantly evaluating our approaches and our needs and what is best for certain locations. We have discussed before, and I think staff plan to do a different approach for downtown projects that would be better coordination among the city staff, designer, and contractor, and it's called CMAR, Construction Manager at Risk, which Mr. Oros will give you a little bit more detailed information. We have six projects, and this really is your desire and direction to do it, and I think it's a good approach, and we can come up and have good projects. Mr. Oros.
Thank you, Henry. One of the things that we have at our fingertips are four ways of delivering projects. I know we've talked about this briefly, but I wanted to give it a, some context for today. Our traditional design bid-build process uses qualification-based selection for the consultant designer when we go out for a design, and then we have a hard or low bid process for that design bid-build. When we shift and use projects for design-build delivery, we do use qualifications again for the designer and contractor, and we have a single contract with that design-build team, and we develop the project using a guaranteed maximum price. A third one that's going to be new to Prescott in the next year or so will be a job order contracting prices, contracting process, which uses predetermined unit costs based on contractor bids for various topics. Using this process, we have a need for some Public Works job, and we can basically hire the contractor directly, bring the contract to council, and be very quick in that process.
Can you give it, give us an example of that type of work?
Sure. Say we have a, our pavement preservation program has $100,000 worth of chip seal that we want to do. Using a job order contracting delivery method, we have already pre-qualified and have prices for them from various contractors that do chip sealing, and we can just go right to one of those contractors and give them the job and bring the contract to you for approval. It's a very, it's a known price process. It's for smaller projects.
So if you have somebody that, or several companies that can do chip seal?
Yes.
How do you make the determination of which one is gonna be brought to the council?
It depends on price, it depends on availability, it depends on the different contractors' experience with the city. So there is still some selection process, but it's basically a pre-qualified list with a pre-qualified price.
So it wouldn't necessarily be lowest bid?
Not necessarily.
Okay, thanks.
But that is a way to deliver smaller projects quickly and efficiently. Then the fourth item is a Construction Manager at Risk process that Mr. Hesch referred to, where we have a qualification-based selection for both the designers and the contractor, which would be kind of the head contractor, lead contractor, and we have two separate contracts with those two entities. The project is then delivered through a guaranteed maximum price. The process for a Construction Manager at Risk involves a contractor and designer working together to develop the project, both from the design side and construction side, and developing the price or the bid for that project. So it's a little different way of delivering a project. Usually, CMARs are for larger, complicated projects, and that's when we started looking at the number of projects we have in the downtown core and started looking at, we have, it's not working, but the, up at the top of the drawing, we have the Willis-Cortez project, then we have the alley off of the Bashford Courts parking area as a project. We have the Summit Beach-McCormick project, which is over by Charlotte Hall. Then we have the Goodwin project, which crosses East and West Goodwin, both sides of Monizuma. We have the Carlton-Larkin project, which is that lower project on the bottom. And then we have another project, the Cortez project, which is just outside City Hall here. It's the block between Goodwin and Carlton, which is the last segment of that street that needs some attention on the pavement and such. So as we started looking at these projects as a whole, we said, there's a lot of events going on downtown, a lot of business impacts that we need to minimize. What's the best way to deliver these projects? And that's when we started evaluating a CMAR concept, where you have kind of a master contractor that oversees all of the construction of the projects. This would be done in phases, it wouldn't be all one construction throughout downtown all at the same time. And we can deliver these in a much more efficient manner by taking this approach to these projects. One of the other questions and features of the CMAR process is the consultant or the contractor that selected, is selected not based on price, but based on qualifications. What types of projects have they done of similar nature? How have they delivered them? How have they performed using a Construction Manager at Risk process? The other part of this CMAR team are the subcontractors, because the CMAR doesn't do all the work. They hire out various elements of the project. And in the CMAR process, there is a very specific subconsultant, subcontractor selection process, which involves the city, and the way the subcontractors are selected are based on qualifications or qualifications and price, which is that kind of best value concept, but not by price alone. And the city has to approve every contractor that's brought on to the team. So we do have a lot of control that way, and it's a very equitable process because we're basing on qualifications and our combination of qual, qualifications and price. So that's what a CMAR does for us, and we think with these projects, we can deliver them very efficiently and in an orderly manner with the least amount of impact to the downtown, which is our lifeblood. So the funding for these projects is spread out over a number, over a number of years, and that gives the CMAR some flexibility on how to deliver the projects in an orderly manner when we put them all as one project, because when there's a summertime, the square area is highly, a lot of events going on, a lot of activity, we don't want to have a lot of construction going on. Maybe they're working on Carlton at that point, for example, or maybe they're working on the drainage improvements over on West Goodwin. So there's some flexibility and some options that we can work through with a CMAR. This is just the first step in going through this process. We have to go out for a statement of qualifications submitted from interested parties for both the CMAR and the design side. And going back to the projects, there, all these projects are in various stages of design right now. From Cortez, which is a concept right now, Carlton-Larkin's about 15%, which is that early concept level design work. Goodwin Street, which is about a 30% level, which is a preliminary design where we're still developing the project. Summit Beach-McCormick is further along, it's had the design developed a little bit, and then the Bashford Courts and Willis-Cortez projects are bid-ready. So that the CMAR could start into construction, and this would be our goal to get the Bashford-Willis-Cortez projects, which are the ones that are basically ready to go, delivered for second quarter of next year, and then move on to other projects as the schedule works. But it is a multi-year schedule, and there's funding that's already in the five-year capital plan to cover five of the six projects. We're looking at the Cortez project as a logical piece to add to this. It's currently not funded, but it's about a million-dollar project, give or take, at this concept level, and we think with the cost savings and the economies of scale of doing the rest of the projects, that we could get that constructed at the same time. But again, that's an option. So we're trying to look at this now from a downtown viewpoint, not just a project at a time. So that's kind of the brief summary we wanted to brief you on today, and if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Yeah, I've got a couple here. Change orders, you know, it seems to me in the past with the lowest bidder that a lot of times, we started getting change orders. I don't know whether that was because our design or our contract requirements had some issues, and so the contractor saw these issues and needed a change order, or in some cases, I think it was maybe the contractor couldn't meet the specifications of the contract and wanted some kind of variance, and so they put in a change order. So under CMAR, are we gonna see a lot less possibility of change orders?
That's another feature of the CMAR process, where they give us a guaranteed maximum price for a certain piece of the project, that's it. There's nothing else, because they've been involved in the design process, they understand all the nuances, what our needs are, what the community's needs are, and they say it's gonna be no more than this, and they have to figure it out to make it work.
So if they run into a problem, then they'll eat it?
Yes.
Okay. You indicate the amount of current design you have on some of these projects, so if these go out on CMR, are they gonna start from scratch with the design, or are they gonna take the design work we have right now, continue on from that to finally determine exactly what they need to do on the, on the project?
Good question. The CMAR takes the design where it is now and either evaluates if there's any efficiencies, say on the Willis-Cortez-Bashford ones, we can incorporate those very easily, it's not really starting from scratch, starting over, so there would be very few changes we anticipate on that. But on some of the other ones, the contractor and designer can work collaboratively on how to build it most efficiently. For example, if you, if, if the designer says, "Put the storm drain down the middle," and the contractor says, "Be glad to," it's gonna cost a dollar amount. But if you move it over five feet, we don't have to make all these other adjustments, and it'll cost half of that. So that's where the collaboration works back and forth, where it's not just, here's the design that the engineers come up with, it's adding the constructability during the development of the price process that gives us some efficiencies.
Okay, I guess also, I'm trying to understand, as I did a lot of contracting when I was in government service, and it sounds like what you have here is you're gonna have a scope of work that somebody's gonna bid on, and in that scope of work, we're gonna indicate whether or not we feel that there needs to be water, wastewater, flood control or anything, or whatever we want in the way of streets and sidewalks, curbing, that'll all be in the scope of work, so they know exactly the level of work that they have to do, and then they go ahead and start to design that and determine the cost. Is that correct?
That is correct. There's two contracts that would come to council. One is like a pre-construction contract, which is the design development and the development of the price for the construction project. Once we work out a guaranteed maximum price, then that contract would come back to the council for the second approval of saying, "We've developed this project, it's gonna, the contractor has said it's gonna cost no more than this." If we're okay awarding that contract, we would proceed and build from that point.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Wilcox.
Steve, you've got one, two, three, four, five, six separate projects labeled on the map.
Yes.
Do you have a recommendation on how to combine some of these projects so we can get the greatest economy at scale?
One of the best things is to make this basically one project.
Okay.
And then working with the Construction Manager at Risk and the designer logically phase this, because as we were looking at the Summit Beach-McCormick project, for example, there's a piece of the water line that's needed to be built in Goodwin, which was part of the other project. So we were working between the two consultants to get that designed so that as the Summit Beach-McCormick project moved ahead, that part of the water line in Goodwin could get built at the same time. Similar things could happen for this project moving forward. And one of the keys for the Goodwin project and the Carlton-Larkin project is addressing drainage, especially down Monizuma along Whiskey Row. So this, these projects will address the drainage issues that we have currently down both Goodwin and Monizuma.
So we're looking at a total of about $14.5 million?
Yes.
What we're looking at on the map?
Yep.
Mayor Breton.
Thank you. I guess I got sort of a question. You know, who decides the order of priority and the criteria of what's based on? I mean, you know, when we're spending $14 million of the taxpayer dollars, people that sit here at the dais are accountable to the voter.
Yes.
You're not. You're accountable to the guy down at the end of the dais here. He's accountable to us. So I guess my point comes back to who, who decides what's most important at a given time for the community? Is it somebody that works in Public Works? Is it city manager, city council, former government? Let's, or is it driven based on public safety? Just, it's a question.
Yeah, and I think the answer is yes. Because if, all these projects have a need now, you drive down Carlton, you know that road needs some help. You look at Summit Beach-McCormick, you know those roads need help. You look at Bashford Parking Lot, yes, that needs some help. So we know all these are needed now. By, all these projects are in the current five-year CIP that you guys approved earlier this year. So you've already given us direction to implement these projects as funding allows and in the best efficient way possible. So we've kind of all worked together to develop this program of what's needed in the downtown. Yes, we brought these projects to you as saying, we, we understand these are needed from either the pavement surface, utilities, drainage components, and we said, here's a list of projects that we feel are needed. You concurred and you've adopted the CIP. So we're just trying to implement in the best way possible, most cost-effective way possible, using the taxpayer dollars wisely to deliver this project or these projects, so to speak.
So we're wrapping them into this project?
Correct.
Not these projects?
Yes.
Okay, and we're looking at possibly doing that, understanding downtown is not the whole city of Prescott. While it's a very important part of Prescott, we also have some other significant parts of Prescott.
Absolutely.
And are we using the same sort of approach elsewhere in the city limits to where we can combine projects to be most efficiently with taxpayer dollars, to where when we come forward with another 8, 10, 12? You know, the single biggest budgetary items in the city's budgets are Public Works, all right?
Yes.
Because you're talking about basic services, it's water, sewer, roads, you know, blah, blah, blah. So is this sort of gonna be the way we're gonna go forward?
Yes. We are looking at, not necessarily, all the projects are not gonna be all CMAR. We do look at that as a tool, and in fact, we're developing another Construction Manager at Risk project for combining two water projects. water projects on the north side of town to into one project and delivering it this way. So we are looking at that type of project. We're also looking at other street projects to what's needed, how do we combine these, what makes the most sense? And our pavement program kind of does that now. We look at what streets need a preservation technique and we know that the more we do, the better price we can get. So we look at how to package projects.
So there's certain criteria that you guys have that would make sense to use CMAR and not make sense for a different project?
Yes, correct.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Menore.
Thank you, Mayor. So as I understand this, I mean, I think it's just kind of reasonable to look at something like this for downtown. Because I think we learned a lot with a couple of downtown projects.
Yes.
And so the timeline still kind of stays where we were originally with Bashford Court probably up in the front. And then, and I kind of understand also what Jim's saying about, you know, we go ahead with what, with other projects. I mean, this is not, you know, we have a lot of other things going on at the same time. And cost analysis, do you think that this is better for the taxpayer dollar?
Yes. There is a lot of value that the CMAR can bring to a project.
Right.
In terms of knowledge and constructibility, that the engineers do a very good job of designing a thing. But sometimes if the contractor says, "If you let me do this," not short cutting any rules or regulations or requirements, but delivering the same element, we can save you some money.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Counselor Menzel.
Thank you, Mayor. So Steve, does this open up these kind of projects to many more contractors?
It can. The CMAR process is usually allocated for large projects, large being 10, 20, 50, $100 million projects. Complex vertical structures, complex horizontal projects like what we're facing here with the downtown. There are, some of the local contracting firms have experience with CMAR as a delivery process. There are some other contractors in Arizona that have a lot of experience in CMAR. A lot of projects in the Phoenix area use CMAR as a method of delivery of projects. They found that to be very efficient. We're looking at it as a tool in the toolbox, not the end-all to all of our projects. And again, this is just a snapshot of our downtown projects. We have many other projects, water, sewer, roadway projects across the city in addition to this. This is just one element of our CIP.
Okay. And the R stands for risk.
Yes.
What is the risk involved in this situation?
The risk for the contractor is they are giving us a maximum price. We will not exceed this under any circumstance because we've seen the soils reports, we've seen how the piping requirements, we've seen all these various elements, and we are going to give you a maximum price. Now, there is a process in the CMAR that says if there's a cost savings after they get going, that there's some cost savings that comes back to the city as well. So that's a give and take. More give than take because it's not going to go over. It could, it could be less.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Lozelle.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, I will say in the past, no offense to engineers or architects, but they draw a pretty picture, but the people in the field doing the work normally come up with some valued type solutions that they could save the customer money. And I've used personally and been involved with two CMAR projects. And when you get that, that CMAR coming, and his subs have talked to them saying, "Listen, why don't we do this or use this," opposed to what's called out, there's, and now without cutting safety or, or quality, that they've saved some money.
That is correct. That's what we've seen and that's why we use design-build for the same reason. Get the contractor in early, develop the project with that expertise.
Thank you.
I guess I got one last question. And how soon do you think we're going to be able to start putting out contracts under CMAR? And I guess one of the things that I'm looking at is, I guess when you have a scope of work, you'll have various contractors put in for it. Then you'll evaluate them based on their past history and the work that they've done, what you think their capabilities are for doing the job.
Correct.
And then you'll select the best one.
That is, that is the process.
So each, each project that you bring forward could have different contractor lists that you would look at.
There would be the same CMAR.
It wouldn't be like you would have four or five that have already said, "We can do work in Prescott," and you just, and they would all put in. It sounds to me like you could have different contractors coming in from the, from Phoenix or maybe even LA.
Maybe not that far, but yes. The basic concept is the CMAR is the constant throughout the whole project. They may bring in certain other contractors to work on certain elements of the overall project. So it may not be the whole same team all the way through because we evaluate the subcontractors at each step of the way after we've selected the CMAR. It worked very well when we did the treatment plant out by the airport. It was very collaborative. The project was delivered very well. And it's not also, one thing that Councilmember Lozelle mentioned is about the constructibility. One of the other elements that the CMAR brings is the operations and maintenance further down the road where we can save more money. If we change this one widget from rubber to a plastic-type piece, the maintenance goes on for a very long time versus using it, using this other technique. So there's some value added in that process as well. So it's not just the initial construction cost that we may save on, it's the long-term operations and maintenance of the projects too.
Again, maybe I didn't hear, when do you think you can start your first project under CMAR?
We need to hire the CMAR first. And that qualification process, we're ready to send out within a week or two to get that started. And we'd be looking to bring back a CMAR contract to you December, January, depending on how that process goes. But it does take a couple of months of time to go through the qualification process to get the CMAR selected and then to negotiate the, that first step in the design process.
And then after that, they would have to actually do the design and determine the cost of the project, come back to you.
Right.
Get that approved, bring it to the council.
And our direction.
I'm just trying to understand the process here.
Yes, absolutely. And what we're saying is that because the Bashford and Willis-Cortez projects are designed, that should be one of the first projects that they could, and that'll be our direction to them, is to get those, get us the GMP for that project, that portion of the project. And let's bring it back to you for a GMP and get it done.
So you think they could actually start construction sometime in the spring?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
That would be the plan.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Come on down.
Mayor, council, good afternoon, my friends. The CMAR, the construction manager, he acts as the, he first starts out acting as the agent for the owner, i.e. the city of Prescott. He then assumes the role of vendor when he presents his cost, his risk that he's giving to the city. So he starts out as an agent in discussing the engineering. He's working as a partner, not starting out in the middle of a project where engineering's already been done because you're going to have failure. Your CMAR makes a presentation to a group of selected individuals. They bring their key people. They bring the president of their company. They bring their on-team design staff. And they could take maybe an hour, hour and a half, and they present who they are and why they can do your job. CMAR is a very good way of doing certain projects. I do not feel that CMAR should be a process for doing a $600,000 Willis and Cortez street. CMAR is a multimillion-dollar project of work. So I do have a question with what Mr. Oro stated today with the 14, 5, $14,500,000 cost for four projects over four years. I can't think of a construction manager that would go CMAR when some of those projects aren't ready to go in four years. Why would he want to be at risk for something when he doesn't know what's going to happen? So I don't see how that's called a CMAR project when you're not looking at starting something for four years down the road. So I'm very unclear on that. But CMAR is a valuable tool. Hospitals, libraries, schools, lots of cities and towns use it. To address Councilwoman Shishka's question, yes, it can bring in a variety of contractors. There are great people that do CMAR work. So, sorry, I just had to talk. You know that.
Okay. Thank you. See, Mayor, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know you've done CMAR in your previous life, so maybe you can kind of address some of the issues.
Well, you're going to have to find the right contractor and design team that are willing to be in this for the long haul. I mean, they are, the projects are spread over a three- to four-year period of time. I do think because the design is at different points, there's some value to having it be that way. Because as Steve alluded to, for this fiscal year, they could concentrate on the ones that are already done. And while that's happening, they could be working on the designs for the ones that are 60% done and 70% done. So you could phase this work where you're actually putting pavement on the roads based on how far along you are in the design. And my thought is that that's how this RFQ is going to be written, that that's what our expectation and want is. One thing that I think this does is it gives us a downtown program instead of single streets that seem to be in isolation or standalone. This is easier, in my opinion, for you guys to explain to the public. We're going to be doing X, Y, and Z over 18, 19, 20. And it makes some sense, if that makes any sense.
Well, I think it does, particularly if they connect, like we were just talking about on some of the wastewater and water. And so, you know, obviously you don't want to be working on this one and then you've got to start planning this one and you have to look at what somebody did before you. And I think if you can do it all at the same time, it sure makes a lot of sense.
Makes total sense.
Love that, yeah.
Mayor, may I, just to add to what Mr. Lamar said, one of the positives of CMAR is we have all these projects. It's going to be three, four years. I personally hope for less than four years, maybe three years. But they, so we're not going to tell the contractor necessarily how to do it, but we're going to tell them what needs to be done. And they're going to work with the designers. So they know for the next three or four years, they have to do all these projects. They know these projects involve water line replacement, sewer, drainage, and so forth. So they may decide the most efficient way in wintertime. Maybe they cannot do paving and road work. Maybe they decide to replace all the water lines for the whole entire area. They'll be done with water line. They can plan it really well. Then they can work on sewer and drainage. They don't necessarily have to stop because it's cold or snowy. There's so many other things. So where they are fully in control of what they're going to do in the next four years, that's how it becomes so, so efficient. And of course, we're going to tell them at the beginning, there's so many days that you cannot do any work. We have Fourth of July weekend and so many other things, all in advance, so they can plan everything accordingly so there will be no issues and life goes on as, you know, as we expect.
Well, just to piggyback on the other thing Henry said, this is a little different. It's not a standalone structure. So you're going to have multiple GMPs. They're just going to have to break it up into segments. I mean, I think you'd have a GMP for the work we do in 18, a GMP for the work we'd be in 19, yada, 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 basically. And that's different than if you're building a single structure. You have one guaranteed maximum price for the whole project. But it can, I think this can work. It's just going to be a little tweaking on what's a general model.
But we'll have really one contractor as a general contractor. And that's the beauty of it. So that contractor is really in charge. If they want to deal with different subcontractors to do certain things, maybe this is good in concrete work, that would be all up to them. All we know, and Mayor, you brought, good question, and there may be change orders. One thing we have learned in Prescott, regardless of what we do where, I know that we're going to see unexpected. I don't know what they are, but it's there. Blue granite, water spraying, clay. It's going to be all their issue to figure it out, how to deal with it without going up in price, if they're guaranteed. So that's the beauty. So many of these contractors know our city quite well. Even if our main contractor is from Phoenix area, our guess is that they're going to team up with some of the local people. And then they know all about that. Thank you.
So I guess the question I have here is for FY '18. And we can only approve funding for the current year, right? We can't approve it for 19, 20?
No, you can't.
So we don't know exactly what his maximum price is going to be right now.
We don't.
So this is probably just an estimate?
I think it's a ballpark estimate, yeah.
If, just one more thing, Mayor. We have a good idea how much the price should be. So if they come up with some unreasonable price, we have a lot of talks. So, you know, because our friend, Mr. Fred Vail, the executive director of Charlotte Hall Museum is here. As we have worked very hard with Fippen Museum, over 89 projects and teamed up, they've also been teaming up with Mr. Vail because they have other projects and they want to make sure it's coordinated with us. And he's here. Thank you.
Sure. Just one more point about this, about this team. One thing that on our side that we have to be comfortable with is you have to have a collaborative, trustworthy relationship with the owner. So we need to make sure that whomever we pick to be the construction manager that we can work with and we do work with. Because otherwise, this will not, this will not work.
Counselor Menore.
Thank you. So Michael, we have the money for this in our reserves. Street reserves, wastewater.
Yes.
Water. And what was my other point? I had another point was really important.
Go vote.
Well, that too, no. Maybe I'll think of it by the time we're done. But it was, it was a good one, believe me. No, sorry, couldn't remember.
Any other comments from the public? Come on down.
If I may, I'm Fred Vail. I'm the executive director of the Charlotte Hall Museum. And yes, we have been working with Henry and Steve on the McCormick Beach Summit project. It's a matter of special interest to us because we're bounded by all of those streets on our property. The special challenge that we're going to have is coordinating with the Streets project with our proposed construction of an education center that will be constructed on Beach and McCormick. We're, it's a 2.25 million-dollar project. We're more than halfway there. I am, I'm always optimistic, but I, I think we can get to the funding part of it hopefully by the first part of the next year and be looking to go into construction in fiscal year 19. There's at least one, well, there's a number of issues in terms of coordinating the projects, but one very important one that I think will certainly, the result of which would be beneficial to both the city and the museum is that APS has suggested, we need to remove, we need to move some power lines in order to accommodate the 10-foot arc between the power line and the, and the building. And APS has suggested very strongly to me that they would be willing to move the power lines underground, provided they could do it at a time that the city was trenching for the, for the Streets work. That has to be timed in a way that it works with our project as well because we can't be building, because that's going to have to be done before we can get to the point be building--because that's going to have to be done before we can get to the point of constructing the facility itself. So there are timing issues. We have been working closely with the Streets Department. We will continue to do that. We're very hopeful that the timing of that project will work with us and accommodate our interests as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Menore, I guess you remembered it.
I remembered. Actually, talking about the reserve dollars kind of threw me up a little bit, but I wanted to make sure we knew where all that money was coming from. And Fred brought up the other, and that is input. I know there's been a lot of input on the Bashford Court. So the people that, when we do the CMAR, then they certainly will go through that same procedure of talking because I know we have--we've spent many, many hours with businesses downtown regarding Bashford Court, Marina, and Goodwin.
Yes.
So we just need to make sure that that stays in place.
Absolutely.
And only gets better.
Yes, absolutely. And I think that is part of our process. We've had several public meetings on Goodwin, Summit Beach-McCormick, Bashford, all of the projects. So the public is very aware of that we're out there contemplating these projects. As these start to move forward, the PR component will be there, and there'll be plenty of input and coordination with the downtown partnership. We've been working with the Charlotte Hall neighbor to the south, the Park Plaza Shopping Center owner, on meeting their needs as well because they're surrounded on four sides by our project. So we're trying to work with everybody.
Good.
Any other comments from the public? Okay. Well, thank you. We'll be starting our voting session here in about another 45 minutes. Thank you for coming, and this meeting is adjourned.